Always remember. Squilla, come stand over here, please. And, uh, Council President. Where's all the trees? Mark here. Carpenters here. SCIU team. Why the lawyers and all the other team? Can all of the technical folks, um, who've been at these town meetings? Press, where's you want to call your team up with us? Oh, you called, okay Vincent, okay. Thank you. Alright, I was looking, where's 32BJ? I see ya, I see ya, I'm moving without you, you know? How you doing? Okay. Mr. President?
Sure.
Can you just ask the Sam Chart guy from PIDC? Can you just ask the Sam guy from PIDC, Sam Rhodes, to come on up here?
Mr. Sam Rhodes, come on up here, from the 2nd Councilatic District. Jody as well, worked on this from day one.
Yeah, right.
And any member of the Philadelphia, of the City Council tech team, please join us up here as well.
Please, please. Just a moment. Let me start, um, where's Councilmember Squilla? Can you stick this one right over here, just thank you, okay? I'm gonna scoot over a bit. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Today, the City Council took monumental action on this 1.3 billion dollar economic development project for Philadelphia that, as I have consistently said, extends far beyond the basketball. I first want to commend City Council for all of the due diligence and hard work that it brought to this process before it voted on final passage today to approve this historic game-changing economic development project, not just for a new basketball arena, but for all of Philadelphia. All of Philadelphia will benefit from this project. I want to particularly commend Council President Kenyatta Johnson and Councilmember Mark Squilla, in whose district the arena will be built, for all of the work that they've done to date on this project. And, um, you don't know until you're in the thick of things how important it is to be accessible. They've been accessible and willing to communicate at all times. And I want to say a special thank you to each of you, Mr. President and Councilmember Squilla, for your leadership and your intergovernmental collaboration. Can you please give them both a huge round of applause? Council President Kenyatta Johnson, um, I've been around for a while. I've watched as a staff person, um, John Street as President of the City Council of Philadelphia. I watched as a staffer, uh, Councilwoman Anna Verna as the President. And of course, you and I together as members work closely with our big brother, um, Council President Darrell Clark. But I want to state for the record on today that this Council President, Council President Johnson's stewardship and his management of this very complex process, it was beyond reproach. And Mr. President, on today, as I watch this, you've seen in it for me in my mind how an executive leader of a legislative body governs. In Philadelphia, we need to be proud of the leadership that our Council President displayed. Mr. President, you know, you heard me say, it's easy to do things when the audience gives, consistently gives you a round of applause, when the audience is a part of the choir. But how do you make a tough decision when you know that there are some people, um, who are not going to agree with your perspective and who have a right to have their opinions and their perspectives heard, but you are going to move forward and lead? That's when you judge the value and the power of leadership. And I am super proud to have you as my partner. I want to say to the members of City Council, and this is important, those of you who voted in favor of the arena legislation on today, in addition to Council President Johnson and Councilmember Squilla, when you had the first vote, um, Mr. President, I may have told you that somebody asked me, why did I have to say your names individually? It is important to me for the record that we communicate to the public those leaders in the City Council of Philadelphia who had the courage to make the tough decision about Philadelphia's economic future, and it's packed with potential, but knowing that there were some people who were gonna call them some bad names and say some bad things and threaten their futures. And I can't be in the chamber, so the only thing I could do is watch, Mr. President. And I watched the hearings, but I watched you also through the public hearings. And I watched you when our administration went down and how you grilled them and you asked them tough questions and you adjusted the CBA and you made adjustments to the EOP and everything that was negotiated. That was because of the due diligence that each of you did as members. And I want you to know, I value it, I appreciate it. If you would not have done it, I would have said, well, if I was down there, I would have been saying this and I would have been saying that, but you did. And I want to say to each of you, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, the Majority Leader, Isaiah Thomas, the Majority Whip, Cindy Bass, the Deputy Whip, Curtis Jones Jr., Mike Driscoll, Ketsi Lazada, Anthony Phillips, Brian O'Neil, Nina Ahmad, and Jim Harity, special thank you, each of you, to each of you for standing strong on the courage of your convictions. I appreciate you. I'm grateful to them for their legislative leadership. I said to the team when we were coming out that today is not the day for high fives and/or just big parties and/or celebrations, but it is a time to acknowledge this vitally important economic development project for Philadelphia. And I believe that all of us working together, we produce this result. Anybody who's walking around saying this is a I thing for me as the mayor or it's just the council thing or it's just the building trades things or just an SCIU or unite here thing, it is not. This is a Philadelphia thing. Listen to this, 1.3 billion dollars. No direct city investment engaged with an expected $700 million in tax revenue for our city and school district, a $60 million community benefits agreement that not only invests in Chinatown, but invests in vital essential programs providing critical services to people of Philadelphia. And listen, whether we like it or not, I learned from Sam Rhodes in the Sam Chart, the facts are the facts. It's the largest pilot payment ever provided to the city of Philadelphia and the school district of Philadelphia. And that we should be proud of. This is a project that will generate thousands of jobs, jobs both during the construction of the arena and once the arena is open, jobs that will provide economic opportunity for businesses and diverse-owned businesses in our city. But I'm excited. When I walked in, I saw a mark from IBEW and I started thinking about Rosie's Girls and Mungu Sanchez is here from the carpenters and I started thinking about carp. And then I started thinking about the SAM State and Apprenticeship Program. Do you know that we are about to put the next generation of skilled workers right to work right here? You can't train. You can't train for those opportunities without projects. And am I excited that our Sixers are staying home? Yes, I'm excited that our Sixers are staying home, Mr. President. I am going to be giving New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy a call in a few seconds. A word about Chinatown. And I want you to hear me on this one. We will ensure that Chinatown will not only survive, but that it will thrive. Chinatown, we will make sure. That's our responsibility, working in partnership with you. We will ensure that you are not harmed by this arena and not on my watch as mayor, on Council President Johnson's watch. And if you know what a strong advocate Councilmember... I'm gonna write it in a book about you and what y'all did later on. I ain't gonna tell today. But later on, we're not going to allow that to happen. Before I turn this over to Council President Johnson, I do want to commend our hard-working team that worked on this deal around the clock for months. Um, they were evaluating the data and the research that had been conducted, Mr. President. I just arrived in, well, we just arrived in these roles in January. But what many people have forgotten, so much research, so many meetings, so much due diligence have been done long before we arrived. So when our teams get here, they're playing a great deal of catch-up on all of those meetings. And I want to say to my team, and if you could all just like step up a little bit, because I want people to put a name with a face, Chief of Staff Tiffany Thurman, give her a round of applause. And she's probably not here intentionally, oh, yes she is. Chief Policy Officer Sophie Bryant, up to the front, Sophie. It's not where she likes to be. Finance Director Rob Debo. Where's Rob? Budget Director Sabrina Maynard. City Solicitor Renee Garcia. Planning and Development Director Jesse Lawrence, who knows Marcus Street better than anybody I've ever seen before. John Mandlak, where are you, John Mandlak? John, he's not here? We appreciate you. Mike Carroll from Otis, is Mike Carroll from Otis. And it's a chart that you will all see that we have institutionalized. We now refer to it as the SAM Chart. Um, it's a way visually to me that digesting data is very simple and easy for people. And every time we kept saying, we need to see it this way and see it that way, we got it to a place and space where it is now the standard operating procedure in the Parker Administration. And we refer to that as the SAM Chart. Sam Rhodes from PIDC, where are you? We appreciate, move up Sam, I want people to see you. It's important, stay right there. Two attorneys that worked on the EOP plan. And Nicole on the EOP plan in particular and Andrew Richmond from Law. Nicole Stokes and Andrew Richmond, come up. Where are you? Mr. President, while I'm really excited about this, I think I heard a little earlier someone mentioning that there are so many other issues that we have to address here in the city of Philadelphia. And we don't have it here right now. But there is a chart that we've been showing, the pie chart, about the revenue and where the revenue comes from that we use to run the city of Philadelphia. And as your mayor, as the CEO of this city, I need to say this and be direct. 67%, 3.3 billion dollars, 67% of the revenue that we collect to run and provide services for housing, for public education, for anti-violence, I mean, everything that we fund in our budget, it comes from business taxes. And if we want to make sure that we can address public safety, address the opioid crisis, all of the challenges that are facing the city, I can't as your mayor just tell you that I have great ideas about how we should spend the money. We have to find a way to embrace opportunities to grow the economic pie. And with that being said, I'm real proud to be a Philadelphian today. Mr. President, Councilmember Squilla, you all, this team, the grit and resilience of Philadelphia is on display. And we are on the move, Mr. President.
So, I'm gonna be brief, but let's give our mayor Sherrell Parker a real big round of applause. You know, when folks try to throw a wedge in between us and, you know, we get the phone calls that we should be on opposite ends of issues and most people don't know that we made a commitment when we both first got elected, that if we don't do the hard work that transformed this city during our tenure, I'm giving her eight years, she always say four, but over the next eight years, really transform this city, really advocate for those most in need, advocate and improve the quality of life for all the neighborhoods here in the city of Philadelphia. If we don't, then the work that we have been doing have been for nothing. So we work on that same mission every single week when it comes to moving this great city of Philadelphia forward. So let's give her a real big round of applause. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't say, um, happy birthday to the love of my wife, Dawn Shavu, she's out there somewhere. And some people probably say, well, why are you coming to the press conference saying happy birthday to your wife? Because council session was supposed to be over on December the 12th. But this project, we extended this session because we knew that this 1.3 billion dollar investment had to move forward. Contrary to popular belief, if we would have turned down this particular deal, we would have been fools. 10 cities across this nation that have downtown arenas are doing one particular thing, asking for money from their city government. This particular arena, 1.3 billion dollar investment has asked us for nothing. We would be fools to turn down this issue. If we want to erase the Monaco being the largest, poorest city in America, we have to invest. And that means investing in businesses, but most importantly, investing in people. This is a project I'm very, very proud to be a part of. Of course, we want to advocate Mark for a little bit more, right?
You got it too.
Of course we want to have to, right? But that's the legislative process. And so for me, this is a project I believe that will transform Center City. I remember when I arrived in City Council in 2011. It was a development project in southwest Philadelphia and I got a call from former Mayor Wilson Good Senior. And he was talking to me about the project and it was a lot of opposition and pushback and, you know, I'm trying to figure it out, right? And not just listen to the whims of folks, right? Because everybody have an agenda too, don't forget that, right? And he said, well, let me share something with you, young man. He said, well, there's a guy named Bill Rouse that came to my office. And he wanted to build something called Liberty Place. And he said, well, we want to build higher than Williams Penn's hat. And he said, well, there was a gentleman's agreement that says you can't build that high. And he said, well, I'll give you a gentleman's agreement and shake your hand and we're gonna build that high, right? He said, and you see death threats, thousands of pieces of mail and opposition. But if you see today, as a result of Bill Rouse building Liberty Place, now we have Liberty Place 2 built by Comcast, the number one employer in the city of Philadelphia, private corporation. And so as leaders, we have to lead, right? And not make decisions based upon the whims of individuals. Now I'll say this, the only part about this whole process I surely didn't agree with is folks trying to paint my members of City Council as if we don't care about people because we supported this deal, right? And I know for a fact that every last person up here did their due diligence, right? We had more than eight public hearings. People gave up their time in the evening with their families from 6 to 10 in the evening to make sure the public had a chance to come down in a very transparent process, make sure every voice was heard, whether for the arena or against the arena. But nobody, nobody is going to tell me that these individuals who voted for this deal don't care about people. So I stand on that as their leader. I challenge anybody with that notion. And I want to say hats off to this councilman, right? They get a councilman a hard time, right? And I try to tell the press, like, examine the deal. Now, some say, well, he only got 60, right? But I think Chinatown made out good on this deal. They made out a special services district. He'll tell you the numbers. A cultural overlay that says that you have to maintain the cultural fabric in the community. An overlay that says you can't build it so high and if you build it so high, you have to do mandatory inclusion for affordable housing, just a couple of things. And then Councilman Nina Ahmad stepped up and said, you know what? We'll do a city land trust to give you the right of first refusal. I wish we do that in plain brief, I got some good ideas from this, right? The right of first refusal if you want to develop in that particular area. But he also expanded the special services district to not only just address the issues along Chinatown, but also Gabor Hood, Washington West, expanded from South Street to Spring Garden, right? To make sure he's very, very inclusive about this process. And so just in wrapping up, listen, I know that this is a great economic deal to move the city of Philadelphia forward. We know for a fact it will revitalize East Market Street. I want to give acknowledgement to my general and City Council, my Chief of Staff, John Christmas. Just give him a round of applause for leading my tech team and making sure the different drafts, the bills, and all the questions that were answered based upon councilmembers asking questions about this particular process. But also in the matter of public safety, I want to acknowledge Mr. John Fitten just for making sure that our council sessions... Let me tell you this, for the stuff that y'all don't see, we got members up here who've been threatened. We had members up here who had to call against civil service, right? But they still came to work with their chest out and their chin up, dinging on social media crying saying, oh, they threatened me, but I had to call civil service. Because you know, we got families at home. We got families at home who worried about us to make sure that we're not like the CEO in New York because of this deal. We walking down the street and somebody tried to blow our brains out. So this is real. Some of y'all take it as, oh, we here and, you know, we want to get a comment and so forth. But we put our lives on the line, day in and day out, when we doing this public safety work, doing this public service work. And I just want to thank John Fitten for just stepping up to the plate, calling our members. Because you do have members that have been threatened. You do have members that have to get civil service protection through this process. And so with that being said, um, Your Honor, it's just always a pleasure to work beside you as we move this great city of Philadelphia forward. Keep up the good work.
But, Mr. President, just for the record, because you affirm how we communicate and our regular cadence. And we said, the arena is important. But when we've had conversations, what did we say would probably be one of the most significant issues that we get to tackle that has never been tackled at the level that we're trying to shoot for?
So this is great and it's going to spur economic development for Center City. But we also recognize we dealing with a housing crisis here in the city of Philadelphia. And we want to address the issue of housing inequality here in the city of Philadelphia. So although this is great, we will be known by how we build generational wealth through homeownership. And that's the partnership that we want to have together in moving the city of Philadelphia forward.
There are two people here we want to make sure that you hear from. The first is Ryan Boyer of the Building Trades. And then we're going to hear from Daisy Cruz from SCIU 32BJ. Ryan Boyer?
Only my mayor. But I want to thank the mayor for your leadership, City Council President, Councilmember Mark Squilla, and all the members that took painstaking effort to have a deal that is good for Philadelphia. And Council President, this was a great show of democracy. And it was a guy that used to occupy the mayor's office who would always say something. The minority will have its say, but the majority will have its way. And the majority of Philadelphians are quiet. It's the silent majority. That's who we represent. I also want to say that my brothers in the building trades, Mark Lynch, TJ, Artis Mitchell, Jamal Smith, Ryan Boyer Jr., we was down here, Butch Bennett, my guy, was down here negotiating. And sometimes people would make sales against our interests. But we want the fabric of Chinatown to thrive. But we need Philadelphia, we need investment. And you have leaders that occupy hard space for the least of these because that's where we came from. I know Chinatown because we walked there when I was a little kid. And Squilla, I'm glad that you improved that special services district, the Spring Garden Street. See, because Kenyatta knows a little housing authority thing down there called Spring Garden Homes in Richard Island that we was mad because we were left out of this discussion, largely. But the Philadelphia building trades and the carpenters are going to make sure that we make true to make the opportunity of the next generation of construction workers a lot different than the last generation. That is our solemn promise to you. We put our name on our pre-apprenticeship program. And I say our name, although my father wasn't SAM State and Senior, he was like a father to me. And that name resonates and it means something because the DAT program is what we started. And I love that 50% of African-American and Latinos in the building trades now came from the DAT program. We know how to do this. And we didn't stop there. We made sure our brothers and sisters in SCIU unite here. Everyone has a great job, a good union job, because the best social program is a good job. Thank you.
BJ! So, really, I just really want to thank everybody. Like, this is what matters to us, to our members. Our members are the people that are working at night, that nobody sees. When you can come into a building, the building's clean. The reason why the heat is running, the boiler is running, everything is running. Our security officers are risking their lives every single day. You know, COVID hit us differently, right? Buildings are now starting to shut down. Some of our members don't even know if they're going to have, if their building's going to close down in the next week, the next month. Especially on the east side, we're getting notices every single day. 400 Market, 401 Market, buildings are shutting down. These are jobs that have put food on our members' tables. They've been able to buy homes, just take care of their lives every single day. But I just want to share just one story about Ms. Barbara Cherry. Ms. Barbara Cherry, who works at the Fashion District, who's been working there for years, who wants to retire. She wasn't able to be here these last few sessions because Ms. Barbara Cherry had an injury at home. And because of her union job and her health benefits, she has not missed anything. She has gotten the medical treatment that she needs. We have members who go see her every single day. But that's what this means to us. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Love you guys. Thank you for looking out. Thank you for looking out for our members.
We know that there are some people who have to go, and we are going to take some questions. But some folks have to go. So, everybody who's here, just move on up front here. We have to memorialize this moment, Mr. President. We know some of you have said you have to leave, but don't leave us yet. We have to do some Q and A. Everybody wants to run out, but sometime they answer a question. Mr. President, can you hear me? We're going to take some questions. Now, Joe Grace, where are you? Joe Grace? Okay, we're going to start with you.
Mayor, was the deal that had fallen apart who had come in $20 million for affordable housing in Chinatown? And isn't that public money in this deal?
So... Councilmember Mark Squiller, who represents this district, Council President Johnson, along with the interest of many of the members of council, particularly the 12 who were with us today, who voted, were very, very clear that as seed money, as seed money, you saw $3 million that was included in the CBA. And we did talk about the future housing that we are going to make an investment in, in the city of Philadelphia. And that $20 million of those dollars will be invested in Chinatown. And do I think the deal would have fallen through? I'm the eternal optimist. We were going to work to do everything that we possibly could to reach much-needed compromise. But it was very clear, you know, to me as the mayor, when I talked to Council President and with Councilmember Squiller, that it was essential. And do I think it would have been tough moving forward? Listen, when you at the table, you understand the people you're negotiating with and what they say is a priority. And, but, Mr. President, while we were working on this, and I think it's important that we demystify this, we didn't agree on everything, right? But we found a way to reach much-needed compromise. And that was one of the issues that we reached much-needed compromise on. Jeff, you had, Jeff, did you have a follow-up? You all right?
The follow would be, but this was always billed, really, as a private deal. The Sixers would haul this thing, $1.3, it's all theirs. $20 million is not theirs. $20 million is taxpayers' money, correct?
$20 million is taxpayer dollars, but we are going to be making a significant investment in housing here in the city of Philadelphia. And that $20 million commitment to Chinatown in a multiple, in a number of asks, folks had advocated for it. And Councilmember Squiller, where is Squiller? Is he... He was... And we're in front of the camera. He was relentless. Did I say it? Was I diplomatic, Mr. President? He was relentless about making sure that happened. And he listened to his colleagues. And listen, the Council President, because I've been a member of a body, Mr. President, I think that's why I'm always affirming how much I respect the legislative process and members when they are advocating for their districts and/or the city. The purpose of it is to extract for the people you represent. And Council President Johnson made clear, we were collegial and congenial, but if this, and this, and this, and this doesn't happen, you know, we knew what we need to do. I'm not... Mr. President, you all right? Is that... Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor, what's the message for those who were against the arena? Who feel against the arena, don't see this as a win for their neighborhood?
Yes. Um, I will say this, and we said it last night at a meeting. And it's actually been coming up pretty frequently. And I think it's something we talked about, Mr. President. There are some people who just philosophically just believe that this is a very bad decision here in the city of Philadelphia. Actually, before I walked in, I was just reading an article about the Convention Center in 1991. And then, I'm thinking about the history you just shared with us from former Mayor Wilson Good. And I respect, a great deal of respect for those people who just, under no circumstances do they agree with this decision. In Philadelphia, I want to say they have a right to have whatever perspective or opinion it is that they have. But what we shouldn't do, and you have to charge this to my experience in Harrisburg, when I had to work with folks who I agreed to disagree with on a number of items, on a number of occasions. We may agree to disagree on the arena. But you just heard the president reference, and you hear me reference often. We are about to address the housing crisis in the city of Philadelphia. And that is when, I think that will be an effort that we can all be on board together. So, I just don't like it when people draw solid lines, you know, in the sand that says, you know, "You're the enemy because you don't share my perspective on this issue," or "You're good and you're bad." That's just not how I can lead as the CEO of the city of Philadelphia. We take issue by issue. Can't do it all as a whole. And I'm just going to judge you because we disagree on this issue. Can't function that way. They have a right to their opinion. But as leaders, Mr. President, I think we have to do what my grandmother would say. As while this is being built and when it's established and when we're working, Councilmember Squiller, to move Market Street forward, when I would get in trouble sometimes, Mommy would say, "I'll show you better than I can tell you." She would say that to me all of the time. And that's what we have to do. And let's acknowledge this. And I think they have good reason. There are a lot of people who don't have a whole lot of a lot of confidence in government right now. They don't believe that government will do the things that it says that it will do because they haven't seen it or felt it or touched it in their own lives. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do here. But you have to grow the economic pie in order to address those issues that we know are extremely important. It was somebody else, was it... Yes, Denise?
Joella Beach has got $148 million extension from the Sixers. Yet, the city was only able to get $60 million. And that was initially after an initial $50 million. I guess my question is, if you're asking, if you wanted to...
I wish I had my SAM Chart.
In a section of the city, there's been abundantly clear that they don't want it. Why start, why $50 million? Why not go, why not have gone higher from the very beginning and said, "Give me what you gave them because you not play basketball"?
So, Juan, thank you so very much for that question, Denise. And you, like many others, have a right to that perspective. And you may view this formal and official $60 million CBA as the sole extraction or economic benefit that is coming out of this. But I would argue that where you stand on the issue depends on where you sit. I'm thinking about a $6.37 billion budget that we just passed, first budget here. And so, you may see $60 million or someone else viewing, but I see $1.3 billion that, as the Council President accurately affirmed, that required no taxpayer subsidy, no commitment. Philadelphia, what do we mean? If I had the SAM Chart, I would show you via a demonstration all of the past years when we've built arenas and stadiums in the city of Philadelphia. And the Council President just referenced 10 other cities. You, the taxpayers, you had to make an investment upfront in order to do it. Here, we had a firm who said, "This is $1.3 billion that we are going to spend, and we don't require any direct taxpayer funding in order to build this project." So, you say $60 million. I say $1.3 billion plus the $60 million, plus the $700 million going to the school district in the city of Philadelphia's general fund. I didn't get into liquor by the drink. I didn't get into wage. I didn't get into all of the union benefits. I'm thinking about the EOP. We had our goals. Council strengthened those goals and got us to that 50%. We're going to try to do what you did, Mr. President, down at Live. So, now, I'm thinking about the apprenticeship programs and the people who are going to be trained, not just students in the school district or in the city. If we know anything about what's happening now, we have to help the peak, the caregivers and the parents who are caring for our students. If we want to make Philadelphia safe, clean, and green and with economic opportunity for all, and you can't do that unless you have a pro-growth mindset and you grow the economic pie. So, in addition to that, I want to say what a gentleman said to me. He shouted from the back of the room at one of our meetings, and my team will remember this. "We're going through the SAM Chart, and it said $1.3 billion. And of course, it's zero for acquisition of the building and so forth. Everything that we contributed to in the past for past arenas." And he shouted from the back, "But you didn't adjust for inflation." I said, "Rob," like, you know, I'm not an expert, but, you know, I need to do some time value of money equations. I think zero 30 years ago, Rob, is worth how much today? Zero. Zero. So, we, so when you're talking about adjusting for inflation, you can't. Because Philadelphia is making a zero-direct subsidy from our taxpayer dollars that keep our city going, of which, Philadelphia, I want you to remember facts. 67% of that revenue, $3.3 billion, is derived from business taxes. As your mayor, I don't have the luxury of saying I don't want business to thrive in the city of Philadelphia. I want industries to thrive because I want Philadelphians going to work. That's when we had a higher rate of homeownership. That's when our city was safer. And that's what we are trying to accomplish. So, in short, where you stand on the issue, Denise, depends on where you sit. That math you just gave, that math ain't mathin' for me because I don't view the math that way. I see the math the way you just heard me describe it. And for those who have that perspective, I want you to know I respect you and your right to have your opinion. But I won't vilify you and say that you're wrong because you've got a right to believe and to feel what you feel about this issue. But don't allow it to stop us as a city from trying to be One Philly, a United City, and working on all of the important issues that are in front of us. I won't be negative. I won't allow pessimism to consume me. I just won't do it. The glass is half-full. We have to be affirmative and positive, and we're going to make our city better. Thank you also very much for being here. Thank you.